Good, I think so. Welcome, everybody, to the October 16th Select Board Meeting at 7:00 PM. I'll call it to order. We have a few announcements and openings. We have two associate openings from the, or excuse me, on the Council on Aging. One associate opening on the Finance and Advisory Committee. On the Historic District Commission, we have two openings for three-year terms, two openings for two-year terms. One of those openings must be a resident of the Source District, and the other one must be a resident Realtor in town. We have one opening from a member of the Hamilton Housing Authority on the Human Rights Commission, one associate opening for the Planning Board, and one associate opening on the Zoning Board of Appeal. And at this point, we have time for public comment. If it's something not on the agenda, you're welcome to raise your hand if you're online, or if you're here, come up to the podium and just state your name. Come on up.
Hi, Emmett Holt.
Hi, Emmett.
Two Manor Hill Road, wanted to speak to you guys on behalf of the Environmental Impact Committee. I'll give you the notes to take.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Emmett.
How was the Fall Festival?
Good.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Good.
I don't think too many people are interested in what we were doing.
I mean, small increments of change.
Yes, right.
Exactly. So what I wanted to come and speak to you guys about today for the Environmental Impact Committee is that we had a unanimous vote on our last week's meeting to recommend to the Select Board to negotiate a new municipal electricity agreement, which is due up in December. And currently, you have the standard brown mix, which means it's national grid standard sort of fossil fuel-based electricity, which actually, I'm going to give them a compliment, is almost 48% renewable these days. So there's a much higher content of renewable energy, and the carbon content is down. But we would like you to go to 100% new wind mix, renewable electricity. There's two versions. You can either get that, which is actually sort of talked about as Texas wind, if you will. The more expensive is, and I'm kind of not going in direct contact with what I had here, is local wind, renewable power generated in New England. But we're trying to recommend the cheaper first step, and the real goal is they get to full renewable. So why 100% renewable? Currently, Hamilton is producing 573-plus thousand pounds of CO2 annually. And so if we can just cut that right debt immediately out of it, we'll go from, and this is the green community's way of us measuring our carbon footprint, 31% to 58% from our 2009 baseline. So we make a major jump right away in that, and it's a good sort of basis for building the electrification process. So how much, what's the annual cost for doing this? Vicki has proposed three different versions, a 12-month, 24-month, a 36-month contract. I just looked at the 36-month contract. And if you stay with the brown, it's roughly $140,000 a year, 139 and change. If you go to this new wind, it's only 143, so it's a $3,500 difference, or really just 2% annually. It's a pentence, if you will, from a cost perspective. How are you going to fund this? Needs to be funded. Actually, the Shebaco Road landfill, the town is getting about $20,000 a year back from that annually. So, you know, taking just 10% of that and putting it to this, and that's in credits. The town is not getting cash. Right now, the town is actually swimming in electric credits to being applied to the different bills, which is another story. But the good news, when we redo this, we can get that straightened out. So net of it all is, we would really like to suggest that the Select Board recommend to Joe to start that negotiation, which needs to be ready for December start date, and to go with 100% renewable for the electricity. And the bottom, bottom line is why now? Is because this is the hottest year on record that we're trending for, and the last eight of the 10 hottest years have been since 2016. So this is a pretty urgent thing for our kids.
Thank you very much, Emmett. Lots of good information there, and as we get closer to that contract, we'll start really talking about the nuts and bolts of all this stuff.
I like the format. Thank you for...
Yeah, thanks for the one pager.
Very helpful.
Anybody else? All right. Any selectmen reports this week? Anybody want to share anything?
Steering Committee is going to have a community meeting on 10/28 at the multipurpose room at the middle school. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. You'll see some flyers hopefully around town pretty soon. I know, Joe, you got a QR code or a link for people to sign up, so we can get some sense of how many people will come. So I want to get the word of mouth out there and get as many people as possible there. And of course, you're all invited as well. HTC, I know Joe and Sean, you're aware, they did hear back on the Mass Works grant, and that application was not funded. But I think we have a joint meeting with them in November, and they'll want to come in and, whether it be wait until then or before, just talk about, you know, it's still important to look, to feel, the safety, everything we've been talking about that that grant had to offer, how they can fund some things like that going forward. That's all I got.
Anybody else? Anything? I'll just share that it's Mr. William Olson's birthday today.
Today?
Happy birthday!
Why doesn't anybody tell me things in advance?
Is that what the cupcakes were for?
Joe, anything to share?
I would just, it's going to be in the Town Manager Report, which the department heads are working on this week, but I just want to make a public statement. The planned move of the Hamilton Town Hall staff to Patton Homestead has been delayed slightly. The furniture that we need to be able to move in there is not going to be coming until mid-November now, so we'll be moving out. The actual move-in day is the three days before Thanksgiving. That short week will be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week. The furniture should get in here during the week before that and be in place. And Andy Wood is going to be here from Arizona to get the building...
To do all the techs.
...all the wiring and all comms up and running. So when we go out there that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the building will be lit up, so.
All right. We have two things on our consent agenda. Minutes of our Select Board Meeting of April 27, 2023, and approve the use of Patton Park for the Hamilton Ed Fund Christmas Tree Sales we do annually.
I have a question about the Ed Fund Christmas Tree Sales.
Yeah, question.
Last year, it came up that we approved the Christmas tree, and then there's multiple banners that are associated with the Christmas tree on the fence, and then the banners stayed longer. I just, like, do we, what?
I like where you're going with that.
I don't, honestly, but I just wonder how we deal with that.
I support the Ed Fund all the time, and I think they've had a few years where they've been a little bit loose on the pickup of the trees and the park and the signs and everything like that. So maybe if we do approve this, it's, you know, with a little bit more oversight, that it's timely, and they maybe ask us for the banners as well.
It's timely we raised this tonight because Sean Timmons is on the call as well, and Tim Olson's also here, so we can make sure that if you approve it, we'll just ask them to make sure that as soon as the tree sale is over, signs come down, the trees are all gone.
Well, I think there was also a question that the signs that they have don't adhere to the sign size. And if anybody here, I don't even know if you've established what that sign size is, but I don't know if it's like a special instance because it's associated with the tree sales itself, or do the banners need to be the size of the approved banners? Does it matter that there's, you know, three instead of one? This is not me caring enough to say, like, I wouldn't approve. I just, as we think in our periphery about banners, I know it's always on everyone's mind.
Well, it seems like every meeting we're having...
Every meeting, I feel like we're talking about banners.
Bill, do you know the size offhand? Isn't it like three by five or something like that? I'm trying to think of the zoning versus...
I think it's conflicting.
I think there's several different versions.
And I agree with you, but I think this is such a different thing because it's right there. It's like the advertising on me, it's right there. It's not like the advertising on it's months away or weeks away from another location. It's literally the sale is where the banners are. It's a little bit different of a thing for me, but I agree. We still need to work on our signage policy. But yeah, I mean, a timeless maybe is okay, but I have no issue with what they're doing for the community, so, and how they advertise it, so.
All right. So anybody want to make a motion there?
What do we want to stipulate for the...
Is there a calendar of like when signs can go up and when things need to be cleaned up? Is there a logistics part to the approval?
See if the dates are...
I didn't see it in here.
The dates weren't in there.
It says November 24 through December 17.
Yeah. Yeah. They, in order, they still have to complete the application anyway, because we have sent that to them, but I don't believe, Sean, have you got that back yet?
No, sorry, I'm like right in the sun, right in like the middle of the light right there. No, I know last year, and it maybe it was just maybe because they sold out of the Christmas trees so fast that it seemed like the sign may have been up, or they might not have cleaned up in time because they weren't there for, you know, basically, I think they were only sold them for a few weeks last year before they sold out. So, but I know the person that runs it, I know very well, so I can check in, and I'll talk to Jeff Walsh, who heads up the Ed Fund over at the schools. He's also the person that does the race in the pond there with the kids. So I can talk to them and make sure that they're well aware that they need to have it cleaned up as soon as that last tree is sold.
May I suggest, this is an pressing matter tonight, really. I think we can push it to the next time and get some more information about how many signs, what size they are, what time they want them out, that kind of stuff. So at least we know a little bit more than just making a quick decision here. I mean, November, what, 24th, you said, Joe? Something like that?
November 24th.
24th.
To December 17th.
We've got some...
Are they here tonight or not?
Anybody here from Ed Fund tonight?
I don't think so.
Isn't there an event, there's an event tonight for the Ed Fund?
Is it in the packet? I didn't, maybe I grabbed it.
They have just an email in the packet. It's on page... All right, so, Caroline, if you feel like it, you could say that.
That word that we like sometimes?
Yeah.
I'd like to table this.
Yeah. And so, Sean, if you want to get some more info from them, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So then the other item was the, I believe it's the minutes from April 27. Anybody want to make a motion to approve those?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Caroline, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Tonight, we have a department head report from our Recreation Director, who has already spoke to us a little bit. Sean Timmons. Hi, Sean.
Hey, everybody, how's everybody doing? Just like I've done in the past, you know, few years, when the summer gets over, like to just kind of provide everyone, just with a recap, some statistics from our camp and our pool programs over the summer. I do also want to, you know, maybe at the, you know, early 2024, get in and do more of a kind of comparative, you know, full-scale, maybe calendar overview of all of our programs. Calendar year 2022 and calendar year 2023 are the first two full calendar years kind of post-COVID for our programs, and it is a lot easier to sort of do on the calendar year with our programs because the fiscal year lands right in the middle of the summer. So, you know, be happy to kind of give a broader overview of just, you know, the growth that our department has seen. But just, you know, speaking specifically to the camp, you know, this particular year, we were just as busy as we always are. We had 1,960 unique registrations, so anytime somebody registers for any type of camp program, whether that's early care, the regular care, or our after care, that's a unique registration. So we had close to 2,000 of those, which basically equates to about a little over 200 campers a day. Our July 4th week, just because of, you know, a lot of folks are on vacation, or it's a shorter week, we have less kids that week. So if you took that week out, you know, a normal, more of a normal week, you know, looks, we'd have, you know, between 210 and 215 kids a day. And we had 530 different children or different campers make up those, all those registrations. We had a ton of staff, a ton of CITs this year. We really wanted to push our programming for our 13- to 15-year-olds, which are our CIT, so we wanted to take a look at how we can get the, you know, that kind of age group involved. We had almost 50 CITs register, as well as just over 50 total staff members down there. As always, we go on a bunch of field trips, a field trip each week, and those are for our older kids, which are always really well-received. So, you know, we go everywhere from water country, Canterbury Lake. This year, a couple new ones. We went to Gillette Stadium, which was really cool. We did roller skating. Roller skating is making sort of a little bit of a comeback here from back when I was in middle school. So we wanted to have the kids experience in that, and they had a lot of fun on that field trip as well. So just, you know, a bunch of different activities that we have every day, I'm sure anybody who drives by the park on a day-to-day basis or just at any point sees the various activities that we had. So again, you know, super, super proud of all the work that the staff did this summer, you know, under some trying circumstances. Last summer, it was really hot and really dry. This summer, we had a lot of sort of in-between rain days, so making sure the kids were safe and, you know, making sure the kids were having fun, even though the weather wasn't always the best, you know, was another challenge for our staff this year. But really, you know, I thought they did a really remarkable job, and, you know, a lot of our staff are, you know, were returners, and we also had a lot of new staff. So, you know, really, really proud of all the work, you know, that they did there. So just moving on to the pool, again, you know, our pool season, you know, again, was super successful. Obviously, a lot of use, and Joe, you can go to the next slide there. So those are kind of the numbers at a glance, you know, how many memberships we sold, how many drop-ins we had through the course of the summer, you know, what types of memberships that we sold. Again, we really try to drive the membership sales with early bird discounts, with making the memberships worthwhile for folks. So I think if you plan to go to the pool, like just a handful of times, the memberships are cheaper option than going in as a drop-in. So having the money upfront or having, you know, the less money that we need to kind of do transactions at the pool, in our mind, the better. So really trying to drive those membership sales, and that's something that we'll continue to do into next summer.
Sean, can you share the current rate for a family?
Yeah, so the family rate, so anything above, anything that would do above $30 by, you know, doing an individual or an adult is a family rate. So right now, our adults are 10, our children were nine, seniors are five. So anything, you know, in a household, if you kind of went above and beyond a total of 30, we just cap it at 30, and we call that the family, the family drop-in.
Gotcha.
So you can see all of our scan-ins from this summer, and, you know, how many days we were open and our average attendance. We say we're open 68 days this summer, which doesn't seem like a lot. Those were the amount, those were the days that we just had one person attend. So the, you know, the weather, definitely not our friend this summer, but you can tell when it's nice, you know, we are busy. I think that just kind of goes with the territory, you know, of an outdoor pool in New England. You know, the weather wasn't super great, but when we are, you know, but when the weather is nice, we are busy with our, you know, with our, kind of our open swim, but we still have our camp and our swim team and everybody. So, you know, not that we're not super busy, we're just, you know, not that busy, you know, after 12:30 if the weather's not great. One thing we wanted to change this year was the ability to pay cashless, cashless pay. So as you can see, we took close to, I guess, $11,500 of real-time transactions at the pool this year, and close to 4,000, or, you know, one-third of them were by credit card. So again, you know, love to see that get closer to 50% in the future. But again, anytime someone pays with credit card, it's just, that's just $4,000 less of cash that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis down at the pool, you know, which I prefer, which I know the auditors prefer. So we're really trying to draw that, that part of it. You know, the unfortunate, not the unfortunate thing, but the realistic thing out of it is, you know, a lot of our drop-ins are children. You can be 11 or older and pass a swim test to attend the pool. So a lot of the times with the kids, you know, they just have cash. I mean, those transactions are more in cash, but when we have adults come in or families come in, you see more of the cashless transactions being used. Our swim team, awesome job this year. They went 5-0, and then they placed first at the League All-Star meet. So the first time in my 12 years as director that we've ever done that. We had 84 participants, and I'll, you know, I'll say it each time, you probably, I sound like a broker record or I talk about them, but these children are getting up earlier than they would for school to go to swim team practice, and, you know, chilly conditions and chilly water, and it really is, the children and the parents, it's really an amazing thing to see. So we had a great coaching staff, kids were outstanding, and then, you know, the parent volunteers, of course, come through to make it happen. Our other big change this year was our pool deck, so you can see some kind of before and afters. Made a huge difference, huge difference with water quality, people spreading out on the deck. It was better than I could have imagined. We also got more tables, more seating area, more umbrellas, and really made a large difference this year. So I thought, you know, the change was going to be really great, but it ended up being even better than expected. So I think like anything, we always want to look ahead, you know, what can we do different? What can we make better? You know, financial stability, right? That's always something that we're looking at. You know, prices are not going down. I mean, costs are rising, and we need to find a way to sort of mitigate that. I think the easy answer is to just say, we'll charge people more to attend the pool. I think, you know, we want to use that as a last resort, or, you know, kind of limit the amount that we're increasing our fees by. So, you know, do we look at hours of operation? Do we look at our staffing levels? So those are all things that we'll look out, that we'll look at. Right now, we're open till 7:30. You know, does it make sense to stay open till 7:30? If we even cut it to 7:15, that's 15 minutes a day, that's, you know, an hour and a half a week for five, you know, five staff members. So all those little things would make a difference, and it would just kind of help us just say, well, let's just charge more, which, you know, we never, you know, that's not really the, our ultimate goal. We can probably add some concessions. We'll be looking to probably do drinks this year. This year, we added Dippin' Dots with our slush. So we'll keep on continuing to look to concession options, prepackaged concession options, to sort of, you know, generate some revenue. And the one thing, we were skin of our teeth, you know, like anything, our staffing is tough, so we'll look again, and we'll do everything that we possibly can to make it to Labor Day weekend with our staffing, but within reason. This year, we had five staff members who, in one way or the other, worked the last 13 days at the pool that we were open. So, you know, those things, you know, I really take into consideration when we look at it. So, you know, hopefully, we can find enough staff that, you know, has the flexibility and the ability to work to Labor Day. But those are things that, you know, we need to look at and, you know, just kind of want to put on the radar because it was really, really close this year.
Thank you, Sean. That was great. I think, I think the pool deck expansion was really a game changer with the people, excuse me, enjoying their visit and also keeping all that grass out of the pool is a big change. And I think the park program's doing great. It seems like every year, we're getting more and more, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when it opened up for registration, it sold out in like five minutes. So that's saving demand.
Yeah, yeah, it did. So I mean, we're looking, I mean, there's not much we can do kind of about that part of it. I know this, this year, we're going to have just a dedicated camp registration day. Typically, we open up all of our spring and summer registration at the same time, same day. I think this year, just so Danielle and I can kind of really concentrate on the camp registration, not that that's going to mitigate, you know, the influx of registrations coming in, but I think it gives parents a little less to worry about because a lot of our programs in general will fill up really quickly, and this way, they can just focus on camp.
And are we maxed out in terms of, like, we can't expand the numbers?
Um, yeah, we were, we really struggled. I mean, we, the only way we could potentially do something with more numbers is that we would just say we're a rain-only camp. But I think that would sort of eliminate, you know, a lot of folks that look for that rain, you know, that rain, the rain day option. We also have swimming as part of an everyday occurrence, so, you know, we'd really have to be mindful. I mean, you know, maybe we could take one or two more in each group, in each group, but, you know, you're talking about maybe 15 or 20 more total, but that would really kind of be schedule-dependent, too.
Sean, how early are you able to open up that registration for summer camps? I know that, you know, given other options that parents have to look at, sometimes they have to go to other camps, and I know some of those can open up as early as like January, February for a summer camp. So what do you, I know you probably have some limitations about staffing and making sure you have enough folks on board, so what is the, usually the timeframe that you can get that registration out there?
Yeah, we usually get the information out the week before February vacation or right around February vacation with registration the first Monday in March.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments for Sean?
Notice the trend. I mean, there's good numbers, but in terms of trends and in terms of year to year, everything's trending in the right way? Actually, you showed great numbers. I didn't know if anything was lower than last year or higher, or how much higher. So what's the trend look like between year to year?
Yeah, so for the, I mean, for camp registrations, I mean, we're pretty much, I mean, we're pretty much at where we can be at. You know, I don't think we can, you know, get anymore or take anymore, maybe a few here or there. I know in some groups, we did have a waitlist just as big as the amount of kids we had. So, you know, I think it's trending, you know, it's certainly trended positive, you know, over the camp and the pool as far as visits and numbers to the day, or visits to the day. But at some point, it's almost like, you know, and especially with the pool, too, right? Like, we kind of are what we are in a certain way. It's, you know, we, like I mentioned, we will be busy when it's nice out, we're less busy when it's not nice out. So, you know, depending upon the summer, you know, that kind of drives the trend with the weather. You know, we're not a, you know, we're not a destination pool, we're a community pool that, you know, kind of drives on, you know, on the weather or on, you know, whether or not folks want to go, you know, that particular day. So, you know, since I've been here, we've always been around the 100 person a day. Some days, we have 160, some days, we have 40, but it usually equals out to about that 100 person a day.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, I think most, certainly Tom knows this, but for context for the group. So Sean, I'm going to get this wrong, but I think a week for rec camp is like $130-ish, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Y camp is about $350.
Right.
Crane and Appleton are about $650 a week. So part of this is just like a pure demand for, like, there's no affordable summer childcare anywhere. And people, I mean, it's an incredible program, but people are just desperate for more because when school lets out, like, if you don't have $650 a week, you can't send your kids to camp.
Right.
And it's, I mean, it's a real, like, crisis for people to not be able to find any place to send their kids. And so I think that's why you, I mean, also, it is a great program, but also, I mean, other communities are so jealous that we even have it and with the pool and everything. But it, just to give you an idea of like how big that gap is, and if you have two kids or three kids, you're looking at, I mean, I think we spent $5,500 on camps for author last summer. Like, it's a grotesque amount of money. So it's really, really amazing to have the program and have it at the cost that it is.
Yeah, and we always say, I mean, we're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to be anything that, that, you know, we are what we are. So, you know, we're not trying to be anything above and beyond, you know, what we try to do on a day-to-day basis, but, you know, we want to be, you know, I always say, we want to be better than, or, you know, more organized and better than sort of a drop-off, you know, quote-unquote playground program, but not to the extent where we, you know, need to charge X amount of money because we're a licensed camp that is, you know, teaching X, Y, and Z. So, you know, we're an active, fun, you know, outdoor, high-energy type of camp type of program, which, you know, to be honest with you, sometimes isn't for everybody, but that's sort of how we have to be, you know, with what we, I don't want to say with what we have to work with, but with, you know, kind of our limitations on space or, you know, different things like that.
No, it's a great program, Sean. My kids went over the summer, and that was their favorite part. So, you know, you did, you do a great job there.
All right, anything else?
Just, how about the field trips? Those seem really cool. Are those part of the price of the program, or are those added costs?
So we charge $25 more for that particular age group. So that age group, which again, you know, the, I mean, you guys, I mean, you could, you So that age group, um, which again, you know, the, I, I mean, you guys, I mean, you go, you know, if you've ever been to Canterbury Lake, you know, it's about seventy dollars per ticket now. So, um, we don't try, you know, we try to be as affordable with trying to make sure that we cover our expenses in total. Um, but yeah, it's, I mean, it's an extra cost, but it's built into the, uh, into the kind of the cost of the program.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Good job. Great.
Yeah. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, no problem, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Sean, how's your son doing? How's your son doing?
Oh, good, good. He, he's a tough kid. He's a tough kid. So he's doing pretty good. He, my son fractured his kneecap playing football the other day. So, uh, finished the game though.
He finished the game before he figured out it was broken. So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Not, yeah, not fun. He's got a, he's got a quite the, uh,
Good leg cast.
Quite the brace on. Yeah. Yeah. No cast, no cast. I guess you can't do a cast for that. So just the brace and crutches. So we'll see how it goes.
Yeah. Well.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
All right.
Thanks, Sean.
All right. Thanks, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, up next on the agenda, we have Good Hugh Street traffic concerns. We have our own Captain Scott James and our Public Works Director, Tim Olson, here to chat about, uh, Good Hugh Street. And Bill, you were right that we don't own all of Good Hugh Street. I thought that was you that brought that up last time.
I know. I drive that road every day. So I've been looking at.
Little piece of it is, uh,
Ideas to make this better. So.
If you guys would indulge me, I have, uh,
A little video?
A little video I took today, um, that we could let you see.
Look at this.
This is, uh, I am watching my speed. I was never dead and went above twenty-five miles an hour on this whole video. So, no.
All right. There's a turn in the corner. Backroads with Joe.
Is there sound?
Regular Jack Kerouac.
Uh, there was, there was music on my car radio. So I don't think you want to listen to that.
Just more yanni. Definitely narrow.
So I, I reviewed the video with, uh, with Tim earlier and that you'll see, and parts of this, it's, it's quite wide. We have a good amount of shoulder here, but it does pinch in at several points and especially as we get closer to Ipswich.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking more for the pipes.
Ipswich side also has.
Yeah, there's a couple of spots that are open, but then.
You get more into the voids on the, yeah.
Right into here. Yeah.
While we're watching, I'll just inform the board that I have had a conversation with the Ipswich Town Manager who is in favor of us, uh, kind of studying, uh, a way to, to have the same kind of rules of, uh, on both sides of the town line, both for Good Hugh and Walling, Waldingfield.
That's where the paving stops, right?
Yeah, that's, that's where it becomes Ipswich. And, uh, there's a similar kind of situation on Waldingfield where you go right here, you're staying in Ipswich. But if you go left, you'll be back in Hamilton in a minute.
So, right. I mean, I, yeah, I don't know if there's a presentation, but we can discuss. But I, I, I thought about the one-way sort of suggestion. I go that road every day to go where I'm going, right? Because I live on Highland. And, uh, that one-way to me actually makes, you know, here's people's opinion, but it actually made sense to me to go the one-way that you're driving. Because it avoids two really dangerous left. If you go the other way, it actually avoids, if you get rid of going that way, it avoids really two dangerous left-hand turns. Um, that, and nobody would actually take a left-hand turn coming off of Highland onto that road or taking a right-hand turn coming off of, uh, of, um, uh, what's the other street it turns on to?
Waldingfield.
Waldingfield. So, so yeah, it cuts, it would cut the traffic in half. It would avoid two-way traffic. It would avoid two dangerous left-hand turns.
We do have, we have some residents, uh, either on, in, in the audience and potentially on, on Zoom. I don't know if the board wants to hear from residents first or from Scott and Tim first or.
Let, let's hear from Scott and Tim first and then residents at any point in time, stand up or raise your hand if you're at home and, and I'll acknowledge you and you can speak. So. Either one of you gentlemen want to go first?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you for having me. Um, Good Hugh Street's like, it's a really ancient road in town. And unlike a lot of the roads, it, it doesn't have any posted speed zones on it. So where there's not a posted speed zone, it's going to come under the state law, which would be thirty miles per hour for a thickly settled area or forty miles per hour for a rural area. Now, that road would be defined as a rural road. And I think a forty mile per hour, uh, speed zone is far, far too high for it.
Yeah.
It's a kind of a country road. There's never been a lot of problems there, but it is used a lot more, um, with the Appleton farm these days. So I, I think you, I would be in favor of, uh, reducing or at least doing a study to find out what, what we should look at for a speed there.
And Tim, you had, where did we put the, I'm going to forget what it's called, but basically the infrared or the laser or whatever that tracks the speed and traffic and stuff. Did, I can't remember the speeds. Where there was nothing excessive, right?
No, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, no, I can talk about the speeds. We have a, um, a machine which will, uh, put on a telephone pole and we'll do it for a study period. If I think we did this for about ten days. So the average speed was twenty-six miles per hour on that road. With a median, we had nineteen hundred and sixty-six vehicles. I think we did it for a ten, uh, do it for eight, an eight-day period. Um, so the enforcement action it's showing, uh, would be kind of low, low on that road with the speed, the average speed at twenty-six. But there are some outliers.
Right.
On it as well.
Yeah, I think changing the speed limit would be a good first step anyway.
So the process for that is we have to do a traffic study of the road and then have that information sent to DOT for them to endorse the speed limit you want to set it at. And that's why we talked about with Ipswich about doing the same thing. Ipswich already has their, which is at twenty-five on Waldingfield. So, um, twenty-five could be a good.
Wait, we didn't have a comparison. We didn't do like, we didn't do like.
Yeah, we talked about numbers on Highland.
Highland. So we had something to compare it to.
Well, we did, just so you know, uh, the police did study comparison of Good Hugh to Gardner. Gardner was the closest. It's not, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, but it was similar in some ways. And, um, up on your screen right now is kind of a little bit, obviously twice as much traffic on Gardner. But similar in terms of average speed, fastest speed, slowest speed, uh, number of enforceable violations, both are, are, you know, not a lot of speeding, um, that would be, that would result in a ticket as of right now.
I like the, the study and the speed change. What do you think about Bill's thought on the one-way?
Tim Olson, DPW Director, I agree with his methodology on the one-way that direction. Uh, you are having two right turns instead of two left turns. So I think you would avoid also that very, where the fork in the, in the road, that's a hard intersection to make that left turn.
Yeah.
To speak, to look back towards Ipswich is you're cranking your neck. It's more, it's not ideal. It's, it's probably actually even illegal, uh, for the degree of where the two roads intersect.
Right. That far you got to pull out.
But it's, yeah, I mean, if we're going to go that direction, um, that would be the, the way I would proceed as well.
That laser couldn't tell which direction, correct, the car was traveling?
Um, I, I think I could pull more information.
I'm just curious if that's the natural flow, the one direction that's being recommended or there's.
That's a good question.
People who are going both ways.
Yeah, I can get some additional information on that.
I think, yeah, that would be helpful to know if everyone's going this way or that way.
Or, and, and I know you need a traffic study to change the speed. You couldn't just say be consistent, you know, that just because the town line changes.
With Ipswich, yeah.
Can't we just match?
I think we learned our lesson on Woodbury Street when we tried to change the speed limit there last year and they were, uh,
I don't know the situation.
Yeah, we had, there's like three different.
There's three different.
We have to go back and do the traffic study all over again right now. And TEC was, was working on that right then. We, we will bring that back eventually.
Uh, yeah, we will bring it back.
Yeah, this, the, the speed limit moves like get to four different levels.
So what's, what's in, what's in enforceable speed on the road right now?
Forty.
Forty speed, forty.
Since it's not.
Sorry, because my car has automatic speed. It tells you forty and my daughter who's driving, I even said like, Ted, why does it say forty miles an hour? It can't be a forty mile speed limit on this road. I've always, I usually go twenty-five. That's what I thought it was.
Most people are doing twenty-five, twenty-six. So.
But it's like my car comes up and says forty miles per hour and she's like, I'm not going to go forty. But I notice that's the enforce, yeah. So I would agree. I think it's too fast. But I think one-way would eliminate a lot of the problems.
What's the process for making a one-way? Does that require a traffic study as well or?
I believe, uh, it would have to. You're changing the, obviously the direction.
You got to notify folks too.
You want to come on up and?
Hey, come right up and, and speak up.
Mike McGinn, one-one-two Good Hugh Street. Good Hugh Street has three features that create problems for residents. There's a scenic road, it's narrow, and it's a cut-through street. Let me explain the implications of each of those. It's a scenic road. It attracts people on foot. The data that was just presented don't show the number of walkers, cyclists, runners, equestrians, dog walkers, photographers, and gawkers who are there every day and all the time. So it's a magnet for folks and people like to walk up and down that particular street. It's narrow. As you saw, the road is a narrow road and in places very narrow. There's no, um, there's no, uh, shoulders at the beginning when you turn off Highland. And there's, um, there's no shoulders when you get past, uh, seventy, the, the Bakers at seventy-six and the unoccupied house at one oh four. There's no shoulders there. It's a straight embankment. And I've been on that particular place when two trucks were trying to pass. And it's pretty scary. And it's scarier still when there's snowbanks impinging on the width of the road. And it will be scarier still when we have the Aura Project kicking in with the construction equipment going through that particular corridor. So, and the third characteristic is that it's a cut-through street. Just like we always have people on that street, a lot of pedestrians, we have lots of rush hour traffic going both ways to and from, uh, one A. And everybody seems to be in a rush these days. So you put them all together, you've got pedestrians on a scenic road that's quite narrow with a lot of traffic and you have potential problems. And I, the, 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 the study that was done neglected the, the pedestrian part of the story. It's not just cars. It's all about what else is on that road. So we think, I think the minimum to do here is twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. Enforce it during rush hour. Have a car on the, on the road to make sure that this is for real. And there are other ideas about changing that, that funny left-hand turn at the, at the south end of Good Hugh Street that you guys might want to consider. Those are my thoughts.
What about, what about going one-way?
I don't know. I haven't thought about that. Um.
Avoid, it would eliminate half the traffic and avoid two bad left, two dangerous left-hand turns.
And most people drive down the middle of the road anyway, regardless which direction.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, right? You avoid that two-way. You get less cars on the road.
I think he brings up a good point about the pedestrian and horse and et cetera. All of our Hamilton roads have a lot of.
That's what I'm saying. I, I agree with his argument, but I'd also say there's ha- half of this town, which they, their road is a scenic road and there's horses and bikes. And so I, I agree with it, but it doesn't differentiate itself for that road for me.
Right. But it's something that they consider.
Yeah, somebody consider it. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Lynette Fallon, thirty-eight, Good Hugh. Hi, Bill. Um, I live in that straightaway part that comes right off of Highland. And believe me, people go fifty miles an hour there all the time. I am scared to death when I put my trash out at the end of my driveway. Across the street from me lives a five-year-old girl and a baby, who won't be a baby very long. Soon that kid will be toddling around. And I see those kids in the street and there are dogs and there are chickens. And there are people, as, as, um, Mike was saying. And it's really, really scary. When I put my trash out now, and one of the things about the study, and I'm not sure if there were two studies because one was eight days and it had different numbers than the seven-day comparison to Gardner, but the eight-day study was in August. And that means you didn't have pingray traffic. And the pingray traffic is frightening. It's not kids, right, who are new drivers and it's parents who are rushing with their kids to get them there by eight AM. And, uh, so when I put my trash out now, I put a cart between me and the oncoming traffic with the idea that if they don't see me, because we know people are distracted, they don't see me, at least they'll see this big brown cart sitting there which will block them and slow them down. But it's generally frightening. And I do think, I'm a little concerned about the, I mean, you have two studies. I think these are two different studies which both support the idea that the average traffic speed is around twenty-five miles an hour. To me, that should support and make you very comfortable with a twenty-five mile an hour, mile per hour speed limit. I'm not sure what the next study is supposed to show. But I remember when we addressed this issue, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, I've lived in this location for more than twenty-five years. My impression, my understanding was that the, the speed limit could only be adjusted to what the study showed people were already driving. And if that's the case, then you're going to get similar results, right? I mean, you're going to get the same results. So I don't really understand how, maybe someone can explain.
I think this is a more scientific study.
Okay.
Very informal study.
Yeah, we, we just had to, we had to please put a traffic counter out there.
So what does the data need to show to support a twenty-five mile?
It does show it, but we wanted to, we, before we spent a bunch of money on a traffic, we wanted to see what it was. So we did an informal study.
Right.
So I don't think it'll show anything different, but we'll have like a formal report.
Will an average speed of twenty-five mile an hour support a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit?
I can't speak to that, but I'm assuming so.
What's the rule? Is that what you do?
Scott, you want to help out? I, I know that the state law changed and allows us to, uh, to make a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in certain areas in town. So.
Yeah, we, we have it in certain areas.
Scott, if you could just, if you just come to the Zoom.
Yeah, certainly. We have, uh, slow si- uh, slow speed zones at twenty-five in certain areas of town. Usually it's a place where there's a sharp corner or coming into the, um, on Walnut Road, coming down to the downtown area there. For a road like that, I mean, I think it, it should be posted at a lower speed. I think the traffic study, um, we have to petition to the State Department of Transportation to lower the speed. Because if we're going to put up the white speed regulation signs and enforce them, it has to have, go before them for their blessing. So we could do the study ourselves and the town would help pay for it, present it to them. Or we could petition them and maybe they would help it. But I think in most cases, they want the town to do the formal study. Um, then present it to them. We have to first ask them to, uh, tell them we're asking or requesting to reduce the speed and then present some evidence as to why we want to do it.
So I think that the, the two informal studies we've done, as well as the fact that Ipswich already has the speed set at twenty-five, well, as our own Waldingfield road, would help us make the case to the state that it should be a twenty-five. And, uh, you know, I think that the board should also consider other recommendations that might come out of a, a traffic assessment by TEC or some other in traffic engineering firm. They may, they may agree with Tim that, you know, teeing up the intersection at, at Highland and Good Hugh makes a lot of sense. They may, may look at Bill's suggestion of one-way, but let's get the engineers to tell us which direction to go in.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I would say at the least that no one's really said it out loud, but we're all in favor of a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? I mean, I think that's a, it's a no-brainer. And then whether it's the, reimagining the two intersections or at least our side of the intersection, because we can't talk to Ipswich.
Where I think there's, right, there's the twenty-five miles, there's, do we re, do we rework the intersection and then we do a one-way? I think those are the three things we sort of talked about today.
Right.
Obviously enforcement's part of it too, but just.
At the least, we'll definitely do the, the first, which is the speed limit. But then I think, I think there needs to be some kind of change to that intersection.
What's a dangerous intersection? So. How much of the accidents have been there or whatever, but it seems like it's a, not ideal for turning left.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that intersection and the one-way. Uh, one-way would be great. I mean, how could it be worse? It could be great. That, that intersection is bad both for the angle, as you mentioned, when you're, when you're coming off of Good Hugh onto Highland. We do regularly, because we live there, come the other way too and, and make the left turn on, onto, um, and if we couldn't do that, we'd just come around the other side.
Right.
But it's that intersection where people are going fifty miles an hour, maybe fifty-five miles an hour on, on Highland. They just shoot right out there. And until they get to that area near Nancy's house where it starts to narrow and then turn down near Mike's house, they're still going fifty miles an hour. So what we, what you need to do, and I know Bruce Ramsey actually made this proposal twenty-plus years ago, which is just make it a normal turn. Don't, it doesn't have to be a Y-type. Make people slow down, put their blinker on and take the turn. And it would make a huge difference. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lynette.
So what's the process? Just, just walk them through what it would take to study and then the, and then the D, the D, the DOT and the response, all that stuff. How's that work?
Tim, I, I mean, Tim just went through this last year with Woodbury. So, uh, we, I think we'll hire TEC or get them to do the work. Takes a couple of weeks.
Yeah. So, uh, you reach out to them. They come in, they have to do a speed study and they'll put out their traffic counters. They also have to make sure the signage is correct. That's what happened out of Woodbury. This, in this case, there is no signage. Um, so they would probably just look to Scott to, for the town rule, uh, for the rural roadways. Uh, they do their, uh, then they take all the data, put it together. And, um, I believe your question was how do they get to that certain speed limit? It has to be a certain percentage of cars at that speed, uh, to be then a reduced, uh, speed limit.
Gotcha.
And how, how long does that process take if you had to guess from today till when it's?
Um, I think Woodbury took, um, I don't know, a month.
That's quick.
Or so, yeah, it, it, but the problem with that one, it wasn't, it was done and then the signage was determined to be wrong. So that's why we had to go back and do it again. Somebody had changed, somebody had changed the signage, uh, not to my knowledge, but, um.
It's not a year-long process.
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a month or two before we can have something ready for the state.
And the cost of it?
Um, I believe the Woodbury study, um, I would say a few thousand dollars probably. Uh, I think it was like three to, three to four thousand, I think, to do it all.
I think, uh, you know, as I said, I feel confident the Ipswich Town Manager agreed that. I think, you know, as I said, I feel confident the Ipswich Town Manager agreed that if we were going to go in that direction, he'd be willing to hire TEC for his side, so we could kind of have a cohesive plan.
Share a little bit of the burden.
Yeah, and maybe share the cost a little bit. So he'd pay for the study on his side, and we'd pay for it on our side.
Can you do it as a joint application, or?
Their road's already at 25. Waldenfield's already at 25.
I know, but we've talked about that and other solutions. Will they come with recommendations that we're just not thinking about potentially as well, or?
They'll look at the intersection, they'll pump up some ideas. We can talk to them about how, what we're looking at and what the options are. They can look at it from a third party.
I just never understood, oh, you can cross the town line, and it's so drastically different. I see that a lot, not just this example.
Yeah. Tim and I even talked, you know, informally about that intersection at Highland. And with the winter season coming here, he thought it might be a good time to test turning the road there a little bit by using the snow, by using snow.
Using the snow.
And kind of create kind of a little bit of a T there for us to kind of get people used to that idea.
And have them stop.
Especially that kind of year when there's a little snow on the road, you don't want people sliding off at 50 miles an hour onto a side road, so.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nancy Baker. I live at 76 Goodhue Street. And Lynette mentioned I'm a little further down the street, but we still have high-traffic speeds. In fact, I feel very anxious when I have to cross the street to get to my mailbox. I can't tell you... I can count on my one hand the number of days that I'm able to cross that street without two-way traffic coming. It's crazy. It's a rural road, but it is hard to even get to my mailbox. I even wonder whether the mailboxes could be put on the other side of the street so that we don't have to cross over to get them. The 25 mile-an-hour speed limit is really helpful. That would be useful. But I don't know. I sometimes find myself to be a Karen. I don't sound very loud right now, but I'm out there going, "Slow down to the traffic" when they come by. I feel a little stupid doing that, but, you know, you don't have any tools to work with here. We've got nothing posted. I also think it might be helpful to post "no trucks," because we see 18-wheelers down that street. Cisco Systems, Cisco whatever they are, is often coming down that street. There's no room for two cars if you're coming in the other direction. And often in front of our driveway, we'll see people actually have to stop, even just vehicles, pedestrian vehicles, because they can't get through that area very easily. The one-way, I think, would be an excellent idea. That would certainly help with Aura when they start the construction, as Mike mentioned. I think it would be helpful, because I'm already seeing high-peak volumes, particularly in the morning. I did do some counts when we were studying Aura. Unfortunately, because we had so much disappointment with that project, I think I deep-sixed all my files. I was looking for it today, but it's high volumes and peak hours, so it would be nice to see fewer cars going in both ways, in the mornings and the afternoons. So thank you.
Thank you. So, next steps, then?
There's somebody trying to comment.
Oh, we have somebody online. Yeah, go ahead.
Jerry Fallon, 38, Goodhue. Thank you, Select Board, for addressing this issue. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that something needs to be done, and I appreciate you taking the time. Steve Chamberlain got this ball rolling. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend this meeting tonight, but I want to thank him for getting us to refocus on this. He pointed out one thing. It's about a half a mile distance from the start of Goodhue to where you reach Waldenfield. If you force people to make a turn, it's going to slow them down. But if you force them to avoid going down Goodhue altogether, to go down and take the right-hand turn onto Waldenfield, they're only going about two-tenths of a mile longer. And you're dramatically increasing the safety if you ultimately can get to the point where you could alter the configuration of the road and possibly go with a one-way street. So thank you again. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
So, next steps.
I think it's... Unless the Select Board wants to do... Otherwise, I think it's for Tim and I to hire a traffic engineer to do the study and get that started. And then we'll bring those recommendations back to you. I'll... In the meantime, I'll talk to Ipswich and make sure that they're going to follow through on their end. So we have kind of the same engineers looking at the same road conditions and making the same recommendations to both of us.
Anybody want to make a motion for what Joe just said?
If you can get the directional flow of the traffic, I'd just be curious.
I was able to get it.
Oh, already?
They sent it to me. They said 68% is coming in from Highland Street, 68% of the traffic.
Thank you. Wow, that's quick.
That was quick. Scott's on top of it.
Good people work in the situation.
All right, so does anybody want to make a motion to task Joe to basically do all that stuff he just said?
Yeah, I'll move that. We tasked Joe and the town to do a traffic study for Waldenfield, Goodhue Street.
Second that.
Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody.
Nobody wants to stay and talk about cemetery?
No, I don't think so. Up next, we have permission for Valerie Mata...
I think she's on.
...to purchase a bare plot at the Hamilton Cemetery. So she had emailed myself a couple of weeks ago now, I think. I'm trying to find it here in the packet.
This one we talked about a few weeks ago, or is this a different one?
This is a different one.
That was a new one.
I'm just trying to get below the traffic study here.
Thanks again.
It's on page 23, Joe, if that's helpful.
There we go. There's the email from Valerie right here, and I think Valerie's online.
Valerie, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Hopefully you're right in your packets, but if you didn't, Valerie is representing for Brother Bryan, and they purchased a cremation lot in 2016. And then her mother has since died and has been buried there. And they are both residents of Hamilton. And basically, she's looking for permission to buy a second cremation plot near the original. And she spoke with some folks in the office at DPW, et cetera. Questions for Valerie or anything like that, since we rarely have somebody here, so it's kind of nice.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate you joining us.
Just remind me, just so, because we talked about press in here, what we do previously, but a few weeks ago, we had some more discussion, and we approved the lot, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Wait, so is the cremation lot different, though? Or is it...
A different-sized lot.
Different size, but not a different sort of policy.
Right.
But yeah, a few weeks ago, we talked about somebody who had grown up, family was here, but did no longer live here, but wanted to be buried next to their family. And we approved that purchase.
Right.
So I think that falls in line with the same.
I think it's the same kind of a precedence here, so.
So is the lot... Because we denied one last year, but it was because he did not live... He had not lived here, but his family was buried here, and that was the reason.
Yeah, he had never lived here.
He was kind of thrice removed.
He was from Florida, had never lived here, had been up to visit family and stuff, and liked the cemetery, but he didn't have any personal connections to the community other than some distant relative. It wasn't even like...
There were like 11 of his relatives buried in the cemetery, and we said no.
Oh. This is last year?
I'm looking at the minutes from the meeting. And that's fine. I'm just making sure I understand, like...
Yeah, I think that was the difference for me, was that they weren't... They were a resident, grew up in town or resident of town.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's, for me, was the differentiator. I don't know, right, wrong, or indifferent. That's how I looked at it.
I think you're right, but I think we looked at it that he was never a resident.
Correct.
And so in the cases we've had somebody that's been a resident, we've granted it.
Correct. That's how we've done it. That's what...
So if children grew up here, moved away, but their parents are here, they could come. But if that family starts having kids of their own who never were here, that's where you draw the line.
Right, right. And that's how we've done it, I think, in the past, at least a few times.
That's my memory.
Yeah, same. So?
And is that a policy somewhere, or that's just how we've been operating?
It's up to...
I don't think you have a policy on that specifically, and the trouble with policies like that is that that's fine, as long as the five of you are the Select Board. And when you change, somebody comes in and changes the policy and does what they want to do anyway.
Just use our discretion in the past.
But I think the policy is current residents, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I have...
Because they were residents.
I thought when we had this conversation that the policy was current residents unless there was an extenuating circumstance. But what I'm hearing now is it's, "We're a current resident and have a good story."
Well, let's back over a second. If you're a resident right now, you don't have to come in front of the Select Board. You just sign something.
You just buy a plot.
No, no. But also, like, say a family bought a plot of four, and then the two kids who were part of that plot of four moved away. They still have a plot here.
They still have a plot here.
So they may come from Florida or somewhere.
Right.
But they were... Had the foresight ahead of time to get...
Correct. So note to everybody, if you want to buy a plot while you're living in Hamilton, you don't have to come in front of us.
The sales pitch.
However, we have, in the five years I've been in the Select Board, we've always approved a request from somebody who had lived in Hamilton at some point in their life.
Right.
Okay.
And Valerie, can you refresh me? You lived in town with siblings until you were an adult, is that correct?
That's correct. We purchased the house in 1960, and we all graduated from Hamilton Wyndham High. I graduated in '71, and my sister and brothers were younger than I am. But we lived there until we basically were on our own and have been back. My mother lived there until she died, so we spent a lot of time there taking care of her.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
So is this request for all four children?
This is just one.
Yes, it is.
This is for all four children, not two. I think that's how it was presented upfront. But I would tend to agree if you were a resident, especially for that longer period, and still with a parent living here until their death, you know, maybe... I don't know if there's any, lack of a better word, vacancy issues with the cemetery?
There is an available plot next to this one. That was part of the thing, too. There is an available lot next to it.
I mean, what I meant was more, do we need to manage what we do there?
Yeah, we're not quite there yet, but it's on the horizon.
It's requested to buy one lot.
One...
Right. Not four.
So what, does one lot allow for four?
Oh, that's a good question.
It allows for six.
For six.
Sorry, that's what I misunderstood.
One plot would take care of all the children that grew up here.
Okay.
Yes. Well, if they have one already, that would be six, isn't that, the four kids and two parents?
I think they have a previous lot. Is that correct, Valerie?
Is the lot you have capable of six already?
We do, but then there are spouses.
Spouses, too, who do live here.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But that's where it gets complicated.
Yeah, that's where it's kind of...
I guess we're getting into the weeds.
We are, and we're not really questioning this specific. We're just thinking consistency.
If one person wanted to get cremated and be buried, and how many would they buy?
You can't buy less than one.
They'd buy one.
So then you had six.
It matters. So once you buy one, have the person buy one, at that point, you own it. So as a resident, I mean, so I think that you're getting too far down.
Right, right, right.
Doesn't really matter at that point.
Right, if it fits X and you've already bought it, it fits X.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but that's... She needs X times two.
If you're buying six plots for people who didn't... Like, that's a different discussion. She's buying one.
Valerie, you only need one whole spot.
She's buying a second.
Yeah. You only need one whole spot, right?
It would be 12 capacity.
Right, and the reason the spillover capacity, so she could fit the four kids on the plot. The second plot is for spouses.
But it's irrelevant she has one, because she wants to buy one for herself.
No, they could fit in the one that she had.
I get that, but that's a choice, not a... I'm saying, it doesn't matter. I can't say, oh, no, you have to, like... No, she's... Was a resident of Hamilton and wants to buy a plot.
That's fine.
Right, you know what I'm saying? Like, whether somebody else in fact bought one or not, doesn't mean, like, we could say, oh, you already... Your family already owns one. Like, that's a different discussion.
You got to go on that one, right.
I will make a motion to allow Valerie Meta to purchase a cremation lot.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Valerie, for visiting us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If someone could say, I want to buy six plots.
Right.
It's confusing you put six, because it's like you don't have to put one. Like, once you own it, it's like the number that goes there becomes...
It's mute after that, right?
It's irrelevant, unfortunately.
All right. Hamilton Human Rights Commission proposed language to their charter discussion, possible vote. This is on page 20... This is on page 20, what is it, 30, 25 in the packet. It's changing the board of selectmen to select board, you know, some minor things like that.
Yeah, I guess my one question.
And you're getting rid of a member of the Housing Authority and a non-voting student representative.
Some language changes, that's all.
I guess I had a couple, I'm sorry, somebody's here.
So it's getting rid of some of the designations, but you still have the same size committee. If you look at at-large community members, they'd be, you'd increase to six at-large community members.
Yeah, it's just removing the Housing Authority member and adding at-large community member.
You're keeping the same number, you're reconfiguring the requirements for the membership.
And this is something that the HRC's been concerned about for a while because
We've had trouble filling the roles.
Since you first filled it the first time, you haven't, and that Housing Authority member resigned shortly after being appointed, we haven't been able to get anybody from the Housing Authority to agree to be on it again, so.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. I guess my question was, why do they get rid of the non-voting student rep? Because it's not a voting, it's not part of the quorum anyway, so why would you eliminate? Because that was, the whole idea was like, they were going to represent all sort of parts of the community.
Yeah.
So why not have a non-voting sort of student as part of the, so that's something I didn't, I wasn't.
And I don't know if they're taking it off because they're having difficulty getting one.
That's fine, but though, but you don't.
I would say you just leave it open.
Just leave it open. Like, you just leave, don't eliminate it just because you can't find some.
I was kind of thinking the same thing when I was looking through the changes.
Doesn't limit them from doing anything by keeping it into the.
Right. It's a non-voting member, so if they're not there, it's not going to matter for quorum or, it's not a quorum issue.
But it's something that they should always sort of advertise for.
I would think they'd always want to strive for that, right?
Strive for and advertise for it, but if you don't get it, you don't get it. But that was the idea when we formed this, was that we're going to be, have a spot on the committee for everybody in town and not limit somebody who's under 18 years old. So I wouldn't take that away. I think that would go against what my thought was when we wrote the charter.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Tom and Carolyn, do you have different thoughts on that?
Nope.
I have no thoughts.
No thoughts, Tom?
No, makes sense.
Either way.
And they added another thing, they said, I don't know what it said before, but they said, "And with preference for diverse representatives." What does that mean? Did they define what that? Were you allowed to say that, with preference for? It's in the.
I think, I don't know if they've just recognized that every time you've had an opening, it's, you haven't had applicants of diverse backgrounds applying.
So you think this is.
So it would be a tiebreaker thing?
It's still, it's still up to the Select Board. I mean, you can always still say, hey, we have an opening in the HRC, nobody stepping up, or somebody stepped up, but we feel like we need a more diverse candidate, and you can turn the.
It sounds like affirmative action, which was just sort of knocked down. Tossed, so I just don't want to add something to our bylaw that somebody's going to say is affirmative action, that the Supreme Court just knocked down. So I have no problem with that, I was just trying to find out the reason for it and make sure we didn't create other issues for ourselves, but.
So when they have the, they've struck the non-voting student, but in the next paragraph that are the at-large, you know, it's basically saying the same, a student, kind of.
Yeah, they're just taking it out of that, moving it from A into B.
Shall be young adult slash student.
Oh, that's fine.
Ages of 18 to 35.
Okay, they just moved it. Yeah, I think that may have.
They've increased the age. No, that's above student, though, 18.
Yeah.
That eliminates the student still.
That eliminates the student. I don't, maybe the 18, I don't. The 18 and 35, you're college, you're more than a young adult there, you're an adult.
Yeah, you're.
So I think. Wait, it says one non-voting member may be a high school student, so.
Yeah, I think that this is what happened, is that they had sought to make, originally they had sought to make the high school student a voting member, and were basically instructed by KPLA that that was probably not advisable since somebody under the age of 18 isn't allowed to vote anywhere else, why would you let them vote in this capacity?
Right.
And I think that they were looking for an opportunity to have a young person as a voting member, so I think that was where this new language comes in, and they're saying they could still have an additional high school member that's non-voting, so it doesn't matter if it's part of the quorum number or anything, so.
I think I would, I would keep the non-voting student representative, and I would get rid of the shall be young adult student between the ages of 18 and 35.
Do you want to discuss with somebody from the HRC, or do you want to just make the changes here tonight?
We could approve as edited, and if they don't like it, they can come back.
So, sorry, what was it, two?
So I said, we keep number five in A, non-voting student representative of Hamilton, and then strike the, shall be in the next paragraph, at-large, shall be a young adult student between the ages of 18 and 35, in addition to one non-voting member.
And what's the quorum?
Maybe a high school student.
Well, the non-voting member wouldn't.
Non-voting member won't count as a quorum.
It would still wind up with.
You'd have the same quorum, because there's, it was a five.
But they're moving it to six, right?
Five would be quorum.
Five.
Five would be quorum.
Were they trying to reduce? I don't know, you can't reduce it to eight, because you can't take one away, because they were reducing it to eight.
No, but they're increasing the number of at-large members. They were getting rid of the Housing Authority requirement.
If you read the bylaw, how they gave it to us today, they were reducing it to, they were reducing it to eight voting members.
How? Because you're adding chief of police.
You have the chief of police, one member of the Select Board, and the director of council and managing, that's three, and then six at-large members.
One of whom shall be a young adult.
You can just strike out that part of the language.
Yeah, I was just saying, strike that.
Just strike out the, one of whom shall be a young adult.
Yeah. So I was thinking, I think that one of them shall be under 18, I read that wrong.
No, 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 I just said, strike that.
Yes, sorry, I read that wrong. Sorry, I read that wrong. I was thinking that's in, it must be under 18.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's the same thing. So it's going from nine to nine, and just taking the Housing Authority and making them a member at large.
Right.
Right.
Yep. Okay, I don't see an issue with that. And you don't have an issue with the preference for, that's fine with everybody?
Let me just read that paragraph again.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, it could come into play if we have, if we don't have that limitation.
Two candidates, right?
Call to the, you know, there may be other reasons. I mean, it's, you called it affirmative action, really, I mean.
All right, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't use the word preference. I would just say that you want to promote diversity and you have diverse opinions, but I wouldn't say you want to have a preference for, I think.
Yeah, I'm having a problem with the word preference.
I think, like, something around, like, promoting diverse representation or something, because it has to be around the recruiting process and all of that. I think you have to, like, promote diversity and, like, encourage diversity within the group and having diverse representations, but I don't, I don't like the word preference. I think if we could.
What if we just get rid of "and with preference for"?
Yeah.
So that paragraph would then be, at large community members, the Select Board shall appoint six at-large members who shall be town residents, and that's the end of that. And then, appointments of the town residents shall be representatives of the demographics of the town, including without limitation, representatives of race, color, ancestry, national origin, etc., etc.
Basically, just striking out the new language, because everything else was there already.
Just striking out the.
Those are all protected classes that would be consideration for an elected, like, an appointed board anyway? So it's, I find it odd that it's outlined there, like, you couldn't legally create a bias against any of those groups?
Discriminate against.
And in fact, to say that you need to do the opposite then gets into, like, a reverse
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want, probably just even, I mean, because, I mean, as part of, like, the recruiting of it, you should be focusing on having a diverse set of individuals as part of the group, and that should be focused on, like, when you're recruiting for positions. It shouldn't necessarily be, like, in the charter, right?
Yeah, I just.
Like.
So maybe, would you strike a lot more of that?
Maybe just strike it altogether.
Yeah, I mean, age, race, color, creed, military status, sexual preference, those are all.
But that's all in the existing, that's all in the existing policy now.
That's what I mean, like, and those, that legally is the.
It's already in a different spot for us.
Yeah. What I feel like the intent here is to say, like, we're not going to stack this commission with a homogenous group of people that will have a monolithic style of thinking. But also, if we do not have people who are applying or raising their hands for the roles, there isn't anything we're going to do to not allow someone onto the board because they happen to be homogenous with the people that are already on there. We're going to appoint them because they want to and they have a heart for it.
They care, right.
Yeah, so I just, there's nothing you can do with that statement, so it seems superfluous.
So, okay, so then, appointments of the town residents shall be representative of the, do we need to say any of that? Demographics.
Was that already there?
That was already, that was.
That was already there.
That was the language you argued for many.
They added "with preference for diverse."
Yeah, and we're just, maybe we just strike that, it's redundant.
Also, diverse what? So now you're going to get into asking people gender and sexual identity, race, religion, like.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that.
Which is not happening. I just.
So all the.
It would go without limitation, and then it would go representation of race, color, ancestry. That was there, we're not going to.
That was there, right. So.
Just take out one of them.
Just to come back full circle here, so in that, at-large community members, we would basically keep the change of the housekeeping of Select Board from selectmen and strike the new underlying language.
Right, you're basically, the Select Board, and you're striking the requirement to have one member be from the Housing Authority.
Right, correct.
Increasing to six.
Right.
So it's just the other language choices that you're not.
Yeah, selectmen to Select Board.
Yeah.
And from five to six, and crossing out Housing Authority. 100% agree. Those are the three changes that make sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I make a motion to modify the Hamilton Human Rights Commission based on discussion today of changing any reference of selectmen to Select Board, to change the at-large members from five to six, and to eliminate a requirement for one member to be a member of the Housing Authority.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right.
Well said.
Finalize STM warrant language discussion, so you had mentioned last time, when Joe wasn't here, we're kind of going through recommendations, that maybe we want to look at the language of the brief summaries and see if anything in those needed to be tweaked. Does that sound about right?
On the warrant stuff or on the goals?
On the warrant stuff.
Right, correct.
I just wanted to do one more overview of it, because I think we had talked about maybe changing a few things, but I couldn't remember specifically what they were. So why don't we just kind of run right through it? I don't think we need to discuss the prior bills one.
No, it's clean, they just put in the dollar amount, that's good.
CPC, brief summary is just talking about supplementing the Town Hall project in describing how the Town Hall Building Committee brought us to this point, and that the funds would be added to additional funds already encumbered to the construction of the project. Did you have a question on that one, Bill? Was there one on that one for you? I can't remember.
Not for me, no.
Not for you, okay.
What is the difference between CPA and CPC?
CPC is our committee, the CPA is the act.
So it's CPA funds from the CPC?
Correct, correct. All right, Town Hall project, brief summary, article seeks to appropriate additional funding from free cash, because we talked about coming from free cash last time or the time before, and then it's intended to cover those costs which aren't eligible for the CPA funding. Pretty straightforward, I don't think there's much question on that one. The general bylaws for stormwater was an article to amend chapter blah, blah, blah of the town's general bylaws, which regulates stormwater management. Do we want any more description there, or is that concise enough for us?
Can I ask an aside here?
Yeah.
One of the things that Marnie said during our last meeting has stuck with me, because she said, "We don't have to worry about that in the bylaw because it's outlined in the regulations," which just put off my spidey senses that we had this issue with the CONCOM where the bylaw and the regulations were not aligned. And I don't, I'm not laying in front of any train tracks here, but does anybody have any deeper understanding of, like?
The rules and regs for the stormwater.
How the stormwater rules and regs vary from the bylaw?
The only thing I can say that I think might be of some comfort to you is that, just as we did with the Conservation Commission, we assigned Town Council to go through it with them and draft it up to kind of the current standards.
Okay.
And that's what we've done. It was Amy Quesal with the Conservation bylaw, it was Alex Weishite, also from KPLA, that did that with the stormwater regulations and the planning board.
But also with the CONCOM, it was the reverse, right? So there was stuff that was in the bylaw that wasn't in the regulation. So they extended the regulation beyond their authority.
Right. Well, that was what made me anxious. The comment that she made was, "Will be more stringent and specific in the regulations." And I was like.
Well, you can be, you can, the regulations, you, are, take precedent over the bylaw, right? Yeah, so it'd be, no, no, I'm sorry, the bylaw, the bylaw takes precedent over the regulations. Yeah, 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 yeah.
When she said it'll be more stringent and specific in the regulations, I was like, wait a second, it can't be.
Because that's what, that's what was the issue with the CONCOM, was that they went, they were more stringent in the regulation. They added stuff in the regulations that wasn't authorized under the bylaw.
In the bylaw.
And it wasn't supported by the bylaw.
Right. But I don't know enough about the difference in the bylaw, because, I mean, it's possible that the regulations or the bylaw could authorize them to, you know, have discretion in the regulations, maybe, I don't know. I don't know enough about it, but.
I mean, it's not, it's not enough to, I don't want to, like, but when she said it, I.
No, I know what you mean.
I've been thinking about it for two weeks.
So I was near that week, obviously, because it was, he voted for, that was the week I missed.
Yeah.
So 4-0, so I'm assuming that they presented a case that was, besides that one comment.
Besides that one comment was convincing.
They said emphatically that they worked with Ford.
Yeah, so you'll like to know that Tom came in and talked to him, and Tom said he thought it wasn't enough.
Yes.
He wanted it to be more stringent.
So, I mean, that's saying something.
And they did acknowledge that, kind of, what's left to be built in town is going to increasingly be on these lots and have steep slopes and.
Challenging slopes, right?
You're going to need to have more, you know, more oversight in the stormwater.
I just want to, I just don't want a bylaw that wasn't buildable, but they assured me it doesn't, it's, everything is buildable.
There was one part that they went over at the end that, like, it was like a multiple parcel thing.
Yeah.
It seemed a little uncomfortable to me, but didn't know enough to know, and it was like, well, you can retroactively, if you have multiple parcels, we can make you do a multiple parcel plan after the fact, and I was like, uh-uh.
Okay, okay, it's limited by size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Broken into smaller pieces, you're sort of exempt from the.
Do you get the feeling that they think they're going to get this passed in November and then turn around and go right after Bridge Street?
Well, they, no, it was that if some.
The remaining lots.
The remaining lots.
Remaining lots.
Yeah, that if somebody already owns some.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was.
Anything that's been permitted already.
Yeah, right. Anything that's already got building permits.
But it was also, if you're already permitted and you then bought more, it was a comprehensive between the two that you, you couldn't, they couldn't be looked at as, as unique transactions.
Right, yeah.
So could the remaining lots be treated less favorable to make up for any issues in the ones that are sold and being built? To a justice of the hill in its entirety.
So from an operational standpoint, the way the town's approaching it, we've hired, I've hired, I've asked Patrick to hire a stormwater engineer to make recommendations on how to work with the Conservation Commission and our building inspector to make sure that they're controlling the water, that we still have the ability through the issuance of a stricter fickle occupancy to make sure they're doing what we want them to do.
Right.
So even though they were able to go in and look at each plot individually, we still have the ability to have them fix the runoff from their sites, their individual sites, on their own, and we intend to do that.
Right, we can still hold that CFO until they meet whatever we want them to meet.
So relative to the, I mean, it's pretty vague. I mean, someone who hasn't been following along is not going to know anything, or, I looked at Appendix A, I mean, that just kind of lays out the new, it doesn't say what the changes are.
So Marnie did send a two-page that highlights what's different from.
She did.
And that's supposed to be handed out at the meeting, and either Marnie or Sean's going to be readings from it.
Did you send it to me? Maybe I missed it, I'll have to look, but.
Yeah, I think Patrick sent it after the meeting.
Yeah, for some reason, I didn't see it. Joe and I had talked about it, and if I had gotten it, and I said no, and he forwarded it to me, but I didn't, for some reason, I missed it.
I know I sent it, but if.
I'll look and make sure I got it.
Have trouble finding it, let me know, I'll send it again.
So I'll share that with you guys sooner than later.
I mean, I guess I put a lot of faith in them, that they're following Massachusetts standards and not creating lots that are unbuildable, that other people would think they're buildable, but that's the faith I put in them, and they're just going to, giving us a process to do it.
Yeah.
That's always, was to find the right process to be able to build in these lots and manage the stormwater and terrace it, what you have to do, but as long as you follow these sort of prescribed bylaws, it's still a possible project.
Virginia, do you want to add something to this?
Yes, well, not really, I just, if you just go back to the difference between a bylaw and the regulations for the bylaw, and that was something that would keep coming up when we were discussing under the Conservation Commission, and to clarify, we said that the bylaw is the what, you know, what, and the regulations are the how. The bylaw tells you what you can do and not do, and basically, it tells you what you can do, and then the regulations instruct you on how to do it.
That's a good way to put it, Virginia, I think that's a explanation.
I just, it just helps me simplify things a little bit, maybe too simple, but at least it just differentiates it, I hope it does help somebody, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Virginia. So do you think we want to expand on this language a little bit? Or do you think it's fine? Because it will be discussed, too, in the FINCOM's book recommendations, and also the little kind of one pager I'll read at town meeting, but, and that will also be online for anybody that looks at the warrant, that little one pager from Marnie and myself will be on there.
So will you do that at this point, during 3-1?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be fine.
We should have the script next week, but that'll, that's where there'll be, it'll be a discussion there.
Seeing nobody's raising their hand, I'm going to move on. The amendment to income limitations for senior tax deferral, 3-2, and this is just talking about, originally in 2002, we allowed seniors to lay payment of their property taxes, and it basically explains the whole thing.
And that the income qual, the income.
We're raising that.
Because of inflation.
Right.
That number's no longer sufficient to get anybody to qualify for the program.
I thought we're moving it to 96.
Are you moving it? Are you moving it?
That's after.
That's the, is that the next one?
Oh, is it? Okay.
Is that right, Caroline?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
It actually ties it to an index that adjusts annually.
Yeah, it raises it to the statutory limit, and then we have to go before the state and have it increased.
For the home, yeah, again.
Yeah, we have to, we have to ask for a home rule petition to allow us to tie it to an index, which is equal to married filing jointly income limit, which is ninety-six thousand dollars this year. By the time we get the home rule petition, it may be some other figure for the next fiscal year. It keeps us from having to come back every couple of years and increase that number, like we're doing.
And did, we had talked at last meeting about, was it this one or the next one that, I had talked about changing the language so that you didn't have to go back to town meeting every time? And the select board could do it? I think that's on the, the next one for the home rule, right?
Yes. And it's authorized the select board to approve amendments within the scope of general objective of the petition, yes. It's already been amended.
I think that brief summary is fine. Septic loan program.
We have a one pager from David Smith that will also live with these documents online when we mail out the postcard with the QR code for the warrant. So David's one pager will be there as well.
And the brief summary just lays it out and then says that all the terms and stuff will be established after we basically pass the program, which is what most people do. Any comments on those? That's it.
I know the FinCom was voting, or voting, or looking to, they were meeting like the next day or that week, right? Did anything, did they differ? I didn't go to the time where we were.
They're mostly all, they had four to zero on all of them as well.
They recommended as well.
Yeah, they recommended it as well.
How many people on FinCom?
Five, but John Fuge was absent that night.
I think the more important question is, Bill, did you want a middle initial included, like the rest of us, or do you not have a middle initial?
I do, it's a W.
Just go to print.
That's okay, if you don't, but.
We all look so official, and then we've got our.
Or at the end here.
Exactly.
If you wanted to say William Wilson, so this is in a PDF, so I'll have to go in and change it in the Word form. Do you want it to say William, or do you want it?
You know, I didn't know what we liked, you go by Bill as well, right, William, or do you not?
I go by Bill, I go by.
That's what I thought, but yet you're William on Bill, I mean, I prefer Bill, but I thought even last time around I did this, I had to be William, because it was my official.
Your legal, your legal name, what's your middle initial?
You're signing your life away.
So your WWW?
WWW.
Oh, my goodness.
Worldwide web.
Can I, can I make a motion to change all the select board four oh to five oh, favorable action?
Yeah, we can do that.
Second.
Did you just make a motion?
I mean, I, I agree a hundred percent, I want to show.
Yeah, I'm making, I'm making, I'm making a motion to change all the.
To five oh.
Four oh to five oh.
We don't have to reopen the warrant.
Because I'm voting favorable.
No, no, we're just making recommendations.
We're not making any changes to the warrant, just a.
Just recommendations.
Some recommendations.
All right, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all right. Cool, I like that. Look at us doing stuff. All right.
Somebody say, why only, why is it only four oh?
Right.
Limited questions, makes it clear for everybody.
All right, discussion of FY twenty-five budget goals. We did this last time around, Joe ducked off just before, we talked about them. Harry had some input, we all had some input, we liked, I think, kind of what we saw, and we added a little bit to it.
Yeah, Joe, thank you for sending the editable doc. When I went back through it this week, and sorry, I was late on that, it looked fine, so I don't know if Wendy already incorporated things, or I had a different feeling, but it seems good to me.
You're satisfied with the updated, updated goals, okay?
Yeah, I was too, I just want to, what page is it on, Joe?
I've got it at fifty-four, this is the one I went through last year, right? And then we had, I included an email from Harry that updates that one.
That one thing.
First goal, yeah. Yeah. Post-updating wording to ensure the long-term financial viability, da-da-da-da, so. Twenty, fifty-four and fifty, fifty-three and fifty-four, yeah, fifty-three and fifty-four.
Is there anything that we want to add or change tonight? We want to finalize them, do we want to look at it a little bit more and then get back? I'm open for any options.
We had a lengthy discussion on making sure if we use free cash, it was one-time items, I don't really see that bullet there anymore. Was it shifted to just say we'll, we'll meet our financial policy funding requirements with the use of?
Yeah, I think so, because we do have a free cash policy, so that kind of fits within that.
But not how we use it, right, on an annual budget potentially, I think it's just a percent reserve, or you maintain.
There's a requirement to maintain five percent of the operation budget as in free cash.
I think our discussion that.
Was like a one-time, like a fire truck or something like that?
Like when you try to fit the budget, you know, don't just throw it at something that's one-time, because you're creating a problem for the next year. I don't know if that needs to be called out, or, but we did talk about that.
What if, what if we added to, I mean, it's, it fits, it fits under financial because it's a financial policy. Review the free cash policy and add language to it if we feel the need to about what you mentioned, Bill, that one-time expense kind of thing. When, when possible, right? I mean, we, for years, we used free cash to pay down the tax rate, which is not a good financial plan. And we, we ended that a good number of years ago now, thankfully.
Because I think it's the third to last bullet is where it might, if there was anything added, it would live. This just says, you know, if anticipated twenty-four revenues and excess free cash from prior year, I guess, or whatever's, FY twenty-two in this case is insufficient, you would make cuts, but it doesn't speak to, well, I'll just throw every cent of free cash I got at it.
Right.
It's just, we talked about it, that's all, I just want to make sure I wanted to go with.
And I'm going to forget, I, I thought there was something in that policy that we wouldn't pay down the tax rate with it.
You adopted that policy, and that's when everybody's attitude towards free cash changed, including the FinComs.
Yeah. I think there's language in this that says we don't use it to pay down the tax rate, but.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
To your other point is, is what other recurring expenses would we use it on? And it's not really good practice if you have a recurring expense that you use free cash.
Right, so I mean, we could look, you could either look to add a bullet here, or at a future meeting, make an amendment to the free cash policy that just said, that adds a line that says that free cash, it's a policy to town in Hamilton, the free cash is not to be used for recurring expenses.
Yeah, I, I'd rather put it in the policy than just have it as a yearly goal, I think.
Yeah, it should live there for future boards and committees.
So Joe, if you want to add some language kind of saying that, and then we'll review the policy, because I'd like to, at some point, when Wendy gets a little bit more under her belt, go back to those financial policies that we've been trying to do for a handful of years now. Anything else that's stuck out to anybody? Do we want to finalize this tonight? Or do you want to stare at it for a while?
Do you want to call out this GFOA style anywhere, or is that?
How so, what do you mean?
As a budget goal and guidance for FY twenty-four, utilize the new budget format, or is that, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, it's not.
We're not going to have it done this budget cycle, but we'll have, we'll have it done, but not.
The budget we'll use at town meeting this year will be a GFOA-style budget, but that's really more an operational, that's really an operational decision more than a policy decision. How, you know, the town's always operationally used a munis budget, and we've decided.
But this is goals and guidance, so maybe we, do we as a committee want you to utilize that budget format for this cycle? Yes, I mean, I think it's already.
Just kind of calling it out a little bit, yeah.
It's in there, but it's not written in there. It's a, it's an easy win for you. But I'm, I'm good with everything there in that format, though.
All right, so back to my previous question, do we want to?
Oh, it's in there, I'm sorry.
It's in there, so is he in there? To produce and submit a GFOA budget.
Yep.
Joe, educate and inform, highlight operations for our residents. So once again, do we want to ratify this, or do we want to stare at it some more?
I'm good with it.
I'm good. I'm good.
Good? All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve our FY twenty-twenty-four budget goals and guidance?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, moving right along. All right.
Yeah, I like that.
Finalize town manager, excuse me, town manager evaluation and vote.
Would it be helpful for me to show this or more what my replies were to you? I don't, I think that you guys.
Probably the reply, I think we, we've kind of gone over all the recommendations and the consolidated review.
That was a nice write-up, thank you.
And so.
I didn't get it to you sooner, I actually finished it Friday, and I meant to send it, and then realized that I didn't send it until this morning, I apologize.
So if you haven't seen it, but hopefully you have, Joe's sent out a memo talking about his basically action plan for the items that need improvement, and some of the items that are just kind of ongoing. The internet's a little slow, I'm trying to open it.
There we go, I got it. Okay. Everybody see that on the screen?
All right, so Joe, do you want to just kind of go through the responses then, and we'll.
Yeah, I mean.
Comment if we need to.
Yeah, I, yes, I hit, I don't think you want me to read the whole two pages.
No, no, give us the, the five-thousand-foot kind of view of it.
Under general management and communication, I acknowledge that I have, particularly on the Affordable Housing Trust, missed a couple of meetings the last couple of years. Number of reasons for it, but they're all just weak excuses, I will do better. Personnel management, you had identified a couple of areas for me specifically to have some training and improve with leadership and communications. I'll be working with our human resources director to identify coursework that will help me with that. We're also looking at trying to improve project management among the leadership team. A small group of department heads, myself, three, are working with a new software, new to me, project management software known as Trello, and we're going to try to see if that would be effective for the team. If we don't like it, we'll switch, you know, we'll, we'll try something else afterwards. But I figured we'd, we'd take a shot at one, test it in a small group, and then meet and talk about it. So we're using the, the project of moving out to Patton Homestead and the COA as our project to manage it short-term, something that three or four of us can work on together, see if the software is effective in keeping us, keeping the lines of communication open and keeping us moving in the right direction.
I think, I think the Trello is going to help, I haven't used it, but I know people that have, and it's been good for project management stuff for them and keeping track of things.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's good for making lists and then checking them off when they're done.
Yeah.
And then everybody share the same document.
And you can share it all, and everyone's on the same page with what you're trying to do.
That's good.
It's helpful for that communication bit.
So we, as far as department head evaluations, we're actually in the midst of finalizing department head evaluations, I think I'm a little over halfway done. And, but we haven't instituted a system for merit pay, that would be a budget item, so if it's something the board wants us to focus on, I will work with Wendy to figure out if there's a way for us to tie merit pay to our evaluations and have it in the budget to do that. Together with the leadership team and our finance director, we will evaluate the, the ability to add grant management and writing expertise to our team in FY twenty-five. That was a specific recommendation from the consolidated report, it will be a budget item, it has to be. There's no real way to add that to the team without adding at least part-time staff, or, so we'll, we'll be looking at how we can fit something like that into. The other item that might require some investment this year would be enhanced communications. I've had, I've had a meeting already with Bobby Gates, looking at some different things that we could do to improve our, our communications. We, we feel like we've made progress, but we, we agree that there's always room to make additional improvements, particularly in communicating with the public. So we'll, we'll try to come up with some recommenda, well, not try to, we will come up with some recommendations in the next couple of months that will be vetted out during the budget process. And under planning, we, I, I mentioned Trello again, and get a little bit more into the specifics of what we're doing with it. Into organizational cooperation, I feel like this is one of the things I hang my hat on, even going back to my days at MAPC before I got into municipal government, that's what I was always focused on, was trying to work across communities and get people to be more efficient in the way we do, in the way we manage our towns. So I'll continue to do that. I think that there may even be opportunity in the FY twenty-five budget cycle to add some additional shared services from conversations I've had with some of our neighbors, and we always look to improve our relationships with our state partners as well. Professional growth and goals, again, agree to improve the skills that are outlined, that, you know, we, we always like to have pointed out what areas that we can keep working on and keep trying to get better in, so I appreciate the feedback from the select board in those areas. Community outreach, that goes to what I mentioned earlier about communications and needing to look at our, our current investments in, in how we communicate with the public and, and see where it makes sense to make smarter investments. So those were the main kind of day-to-day areas that I was judged on for priority goals, I focused on the things that were not met. Third cell tower. This is kind of a, one of those things where it remains just a little bit beyond our control, we can't solve this on our own. We've been trying to talk to Everest, and they're indicated that they're not really in, in building mode right now, and their view is that the industry isn't. They had kind of a right of first refusal on public safety, if we've basically indicated to them that they don't want to move forward, that's fine, we'll, we'll look for another partner, we may be coming up to the day where we go look for no partner. The website data analytics and tracking, we have reached out to Sterling, we have some of that information, and we're going to look to meet with them to look at how we can get better, make better use of the information, access it more often and make better use of it, and figure out how to improve our, our website traffic. Brick ends contract, again, this is another one that's kind of a little bit beyond our control, it takes two to tango, as they say. We've been trying for.
Peter sees no need for it.
We've been trying since I've been here to get him under contract, it's not required under state law, and he doesn't really see a need to. I'll make another effort this year to get an agreement with him, and if he doesn't want to do that, then I'll, I will look and pivot to other sources. My biggest fear is that at some point, Brick Ends is going to decide that they don't want to do this anymore, and then we're going to be left
Stuck.
With compost bins that we, you know, can't take anywhere. Casella is now offering composting service as well, so that's, it, it may be possible to add that to our current contract, and then look at the whole thing down the road when we go back out. And developable land, I think that our, we've been focused on the master plan and specifically focused on working with the folks at Browns Hill about the overlay district stuff up there, now that that stuff seems to be reaching conclusions, I will have Patrick start the process of identifying developable sites in town, both those that we control and those that we don't, that may include great estates and things that may eventually get sold off by families and broken up. And once we have a good list of developable sites, we can work with the State's Economic Development Council to communicate those sites to people that are approaching the state looking for places to grow. That's what we did in Winthrop, we don't have the, the list yet, but it shouldn't be that hard to put together a list, so we'll set, we'll, we'll make that. I, I'd ask that that continue for a goal for this year, because I think we'll finish it in the next six months or so.
Comments, questions?
I appreciate you putting it together.
Oh, no, that was excellent. On the developable land, can we influence at all how it's developed, or that's nothing to do with us? It was an interesting discussion at our last area committee meeting.
So I think we can influence it, but we can't, you know, we don't have, we don't have sole ability to make that determination. I think that's what we learned with the Browns Hill thing, right? We, we hired consultants, worked with Gordon Conwell, had the visioning sessions and everything else, and then asked the market analyst what he saw, and he, and it came back and said, if you're selling right now, this is what you'll get. And I haven't seen the offers, but from what I'm told by the folks at Gordon Conwell, they were pretty spot-on. We're getting mostly housing proposed up there, and some things that might be, you know, ancillary to housing are things that would be supported by being near housing.
I think the thought was around how can, housing would be the answer, but how do you get more different price points, more diverse price points, as opposed to McMansions?
And, and so that's probably something we, we, we could have more impact on. I think the, the market generally looks at Hamilton as a, as a residential community.
Yeah.
And we're not really far from highways, but we're not really close to highways either, so you, you'd be looking for that specific buyer or developer who wants to be in this, in this type of environment, and you generally don't make your plans for developing around finding the perfect buyer, right? You generally make plans to try to find the, the most amount of people that want to come and do business in your town, whatever that kind of business is, and then make, make your zoning around encouraging those people to come to town, so.
Got it. No, I liked it, it looked good, I mean, curious about the, what'd you call it, Trello, the tracking tool? I don't know if you can put budgets in that as well and track that way, or it's just more, you know, what can you, and what can you roll up to look at?
I think the GFOA budget, I think the GFOA budget is going to take care of a lot of what we're looking to do as far as communicating our, our budget goals and communicating among the leadership team about our priorities. I'm, I'm not necessarily looking for Trello to do that, I think, you know, the budget process can be in Trello, right? But, you know, that, at this point, thirteen department heads are going to input their, their annual budget request, right? That, then they all check it off, and when it gets signed, it gets moved to the next step. That could be there, but I don't think the budget document itself would be there, I think we'll just continue to rely on the GFOA-style budget.
Any other comments or questions? So do we want to finalize the town manager evaluation with Joe's comments?
I think we do.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I wasn't here last year, it's kind of.
That's true.
I'm happy.
You're, you're off the hook, got to be one of these folks.
What, what's happening?
You're going to make a motion to finalize the town manager evaluation with Joe's comments?
So moved.
All right, second by anybody?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, I just have it.
Good job.
All right.
I'm ashamed to ask this question.
Yeah.
How was Joe given that feedback? Would you all do it in the last meeting?
The meeting, you missed, you missed the meeting.
Two meetings ago.
Yeah, it was two meetings ago.
Meetings ago, I read over the consolidated report with the recommendations in it.
Got it.
And then Joe is answering to the recommendations on how he's going to meet those recommendations. Not a silly question, Val, you're up to date now.
I've been searching my emails the whole time, I was like, I missed some.
No, it's during the meeting.
It was a discussion, I went and watched it, yeah, I missed it as well.
Got it, okay.
Up next, we have new business, and we do have one new business item that Joe will share about.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily looking for a vote tonight, and maybe it's something we can put on the agenda to talk at the next meeting, I just want to bring it up really quickly. We've been approached by Everest, so we have a twenty-year lease with Everest that paid us at, on the. So we have a twenty-year lease with Everest that paid us at, in the first year was $27,000. Paid in equal, uh, monthly installments over the course of the year, and then there's an escalator and I think it's two or three percent, it goes up every year. You know, forgetting about the escalator, if you just took the twenty-year lease at $27,000, that'd be $540,000 to the town over the twenty years. Everest has made an offer via email to buy us out of the lease for, for a lump sum payment of $434,000. It's easy to say, okay, well, we're losing money on this, and we are. And the other thing is that the, uh, the current lease payment also increases when they have more than one user on the poll, so right now, we only have Verizon on the poll, but if they add T-Mobile or somebody else, that lease payment will go up from $27,000 a year by some amount. Uh, they're looking to buy us out of the lease, I'm wondering if they are getting ready to put somebody else on the poll and they're trying to limit how much they have to pay us over that.
I told you, I talked to them, they've got Dish is going on, so.
But that, but that financial calculus shouldn't end just there. There is something to be said for having a lump sum of money that you could do something with in a given year, so if there was something that the town was looking to make an investment in, or some way that you wanted to use those funds. You know, you could, you could agree to the, the lump sum payment, we wouldn't have to collect $30,000 a year from them anymore. And then you would have $430,000 to, to put into a one-time expense or put towards sidewalks, I, you know, I'm just trying to think of things that have come up over the last couple of years that have been difficult. Patent park improvements, things that the town would otherwise have to try to save or either bond for or something else. So there is a reason to consider the offer, it's a, a pretty good offer, uh, we would definitely be losing money.
Yeah, it's about, it's about a hundred.
I think the discounted rate of return on that is pretty low, I mean, you're looking at the flat.
It's about a.
Twenty-seven, what'd you say, three percent?
I think it's three percent.
So twenty years out, that goes to four, I mean, to almost eight hundred.
Yeah.
And then if you get.
Right.
Twenty-five percent of a, of someone other carrier, you're gonna get this thing going.
It's gonna go up, so.
I think there's a reason they probably want to sell it.
Yep.
And I would want to know if they're gonna keep it or if now they have the right to sell it.
Right.
What does that mean, what are the pros and cons?
Right.
Of that, but I think, I think that's your first offer, and I think that that, you, you can do better.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But, but everything else you said was true, if you need the cash, there's also something to be said about annuity over time. That grows, that's money in the bank to fund future things as well.
Right, I guess the question is, do we want, like, I hate to say fast cash, but you, you lose a hundred K kinda, right? Because you're saying five forty would be the payout if it was today kinda, and would get four fifty or something, right? Four thirty something?
He thinks we'll lose a more.
Over time, over time, but I'm saying estimated of today, if you're just, if you're doing.
You've filed it for twenty years, right, twenty-seven, twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a twenty-year lease, right?
You didn't do the three, that twenty-seven becomes forty-seven.
I didn't do the three percent, right.
Quickly.
Right.
And then, then there's a second carrier, Dish, I know for a fact, coming on there.
Yeah.
How many carriers can go on?
You can put three.
You can put three on there, so.
So take that again, I mean, Dish, that, I think you said you get twenty-five percent of their gross.
Yeah.
And the third, the third will come, it's inevitable.
That'll be seven grand starting in, in month one, and that'll grow three percent, do that three, two more times.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I'd want to lay this out and just see what the discount.
Yeah, I'd like to see the matrix of the, over the.
Can your team do that, can they like do a present value calculation?
I can, I can work with Wendy and we'll get, we'll get you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the question I have was, I agree with you in terms of, it's their first deal, so the question we have is, are we interested in spending time on a negotiation? Or is it a, or is it a, is it a, no, we don't, no matter what it is.
Is it this or that?
We'd rather, yeah, but I, I agree with, I think if we can get a better deal, it might be worth financing something in town without having to go borrow money in pain.
Right.
So.
Right.
That we might want to do, one time, one, one's gonna, it's gotta be a one, it can't be, it's gotta be a one-time thing, right? It can't be, you know, it can't offset taxes, but it can offset a project in town.
Yeah, is it, is it paying down this, this new school?
Right, yeah.
Is it paying down?
Right.
Turf field money, is it paying down some?
Yeah.
Other X factor, like, like Joe said, sidewalk or something like that, that's, uh, uh, a one-time-ish expense kind of a thing that would lower some of the.
Yeah, but for $430,000, you could do a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah.
But, but then, you know, then that's all you have.
A lot more with.
Well, I, I mean.
I would say like, get them in the 750 range and then.
I could easily walk this, I'm just scratching an envelope in my head right now, but, um, and, and I'm putting together, and I don't know anything that's going on, but the fact that they don't want to do a second and they wanna, what are they gonna do with it? Are they gonna sell it off and then we don't know what's gonna happen there, and they, you could see, it's an easement, right? You could see anything happening, and we'll have no control at that point.
Right.
You're gonna lose complete control of the ground.
Right.
Uh, right now you have it in the lease that you sent us.
How many, how many years of lease?
Twenty, I think.
And how many are, we're like.
What do we, when did it start, from when it went live or?
It went from when it went live, so it's only been, uh, like.
Couple years.
I think we're on second or third year now, second year now, I think, they're going into our third year.
Just my.
There's a lot of details there.
I've seen a lot of them flip, but don't jump at your first offer.
No, I, I was just bringing it up to you, I wasn't gonna recommend, um.
I think we need, I think we need to know more and look at a projection, right?
Yeah.
Of what three, three, three arrays up there.
Yeah, first of all, it, it, you know, he hasn't sent anything that said Dish is going on it, have you seen any activity?
No, other than you telling me that you thought you'd heard.
He told me that they're going on it.
I haven't seen anything officially from them yet.
So that should increase, so, so I would ask, you know, what, what discounting, what, what rate is he using, you want to know your rate of return on this?
Yeah.
Right, because this offer he, he gave us now was with one array and we know there's gonna be two on it.
Yeah.
So that, that adds to our buy, our buyout anyways, even if we do agree to it.
Could he just be looking to improve his cash, cash position? If he buys us out, uh, the one and then.
It's hurting his cash position, he's giving you a lot of money, right?
Right.
Oh, right, I mean, yeah, sorry, I, I misstated that, but is he looking to improve his?
We should have, we should meet it as our subgroup, but there's a lot more I would want to say.
Yeah.
As far as, this is public, man.
So you want to?
I mean, just in how I look at these things, but I, I like that, your thinking, I just think that, uh.
Yeah, I would say that.
For slight.
For this, this number and offer, no. But I think we need to do some more.
I want to do the math, add the three percent over the twenty years, come up with that number, assume Dish is coming in, so whatever percent of the gross revenue that Everest is getting from Dish.
Yeah.
You get twenty-five percent, grow that by three percent over twenty years as well, add the two numbers together, that's your.
That's our starting.
That's your gross, and then, then we can figure out what a dollar today is worth versus a dollar over twenty years.
I would even go as far as to calculate a third array in there.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna have three, it's, it's inevitable.
That's max capacity, that's what someone's gonna do, and it's fair to ask them, you know, are you gonna turn and sell this, or are you gonna, you know, what, what else is changing?
Right. Why are you trying to cash it out?
You're, you're.
And then there's other, there's tax consequences too, I mean, as the land property owner, I mean, I, I don't know what we're paying on there now, I mean, are we, are we gonna get a tax bill for the property still there? Or are they gonna carve that out and they're paying that as now the owner of the ground lease?
You have a pilot on it?
There's a pilot on it, I think.
A what?
A pilot.
Is it, I'm not sure, we do.
Did we?
I'm not sure you have.
I have to, I can't think back.
Do you pay any, you must pay revenue tax on the twenty-seven you're getting on there?
We should, no, the town, the town's not paying any.
You have to be, you're getting paid a lease.
It's a lease payment for our property.
Yeah.
If anything, they'd be paying us tax, property taxes on the.
Uh, they pay, that's my question, who's paying?
They're either paying property taxes or they're, or they're making a payment.
It's a receipt to the town, though.
I think they're paying a property tax on it, because I think we didn't do the pilot.
Right.
Because we had, we had asked for a certain number of pilot and they said, no, we'd rather just pay the taxes.
So they're paying taxes, they're paying property tax on it.
I'm pretty sure that's how it was.
So we don't have any incremental tax consequence from that property on that, and the transmission of cellular service back.
Who would we pay the tax to, ourselves?
I don't know, I mean, you could be, you, I mean, I've seen that, it's a sales receipt, you're renting.
Rent.
Revenue for the town.
But they're renting it from us, it's our, it's our, it's revenue for the town.
Yeah, but still, if I own a property and I'm getting, somebody's paying me rent, I mean, I have to report that rent, I'm paying taxes on that, right? It's revenue.
It, not as a municipality, we're not, who, who.
I'm asking that, it's not, so we're sure we're not paying, we have no incremental tax consequences on it.
We're not paying taxes, they're paying us, and, you know, the two ways that they could do it is they pay the property tax on the equipment that they have installed on the site, or they could have signed a pilot with us, which I don't recall seeing, so. It was all done before I was here, but I don't recall seeing a pilot, so I don't, I believe they're paying us property tax on the tower and the equipment that's on the tower.
I think so.
In addition to paying the lease payment.
And the, and this, assessed value of this property hasn't gone up because of it, we don't pay something?
We don't pay taxes, we don't pay taxes on our water, we don't, on any of our public property.
Taxes on our property.
We don't pay taxes to ourselves.
So that's, might be the difference then.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-seven thousand becomes, on year twenty, becomes forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Like seven hundred, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars over twenty years at three percent.
And that's just one, with one.
That's just one carrier.
So I bet you, if you do that every month, you're gonna get around seven hundred grand out of that five forty you came up with first, and then add the two carriers on top.
And the other two.
You're gonna get this thing to, close to nine.
Yeah.
Over twenty years, if you kept it and maximized it.
Right.
And got you three percent.
Yeah, so I'm saying, three percent, it goes to seven twenty-seven.
So.
At twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it makes sense.
Right, but then I'm saying add every month up, the total gross receipts over twenty years is gonna be seven thousand.
More than that.
No, but I'm saying that's why I added up, added up the three percent per year.
Yeah, to get to the seven twenty-seven, but that was, that was just with the one carrier.
One carrier.
Once you add another carrier on, that'll all grow up.
Yeah, get to nine hundred, no problem.
That's how I'm getting to nine hundred, yeah, it's about one eighty.
You're at about a million.
I think on the twenty-five percent, if he gets, if he still gets twenty-seven thousand from the other carrier, I don't know if he would.
Yeah.
That's it. You, you saw the number grow, that's, that's the point of trying.
Right.
And so then you want to figure out what that, a dollar today is worth versus waiting and collecting that, because that annuity over time will help fund a lot of things as well.
That forty-eight thousand might not be.
So, well.
Forty-eight thousand, right.
So what I was gonna say.
Exactly, that's why you gotta do a discounted.
Right, what's, what's the, right, inflation rate?
Right, use a working capital.
We, we could make a decision to start to look at this, so right now, all revenue that comes to town is general fund revenue, it goes to the, it goes into the budget process, we account for it, and when we do the, uh, projection for what we're gonna have to spend in FY 25. But we could make a policy decision to.
Separate it out.
To separate it out and have it approved to town, meaning that the twenty-seven thousand, whatever it is, plus three percent payment from, uh, Everest will go into an account to be used for X, Y, or Z in the future, one of the, a, a cruise to.
Stabilization fund.
You make a compelling case where we could just keep collecting that money, as long as we're collecting that money and saving it, not just dumping it into the, to the general fund to keep, toss the taxes.
Right, because then it just goes.
Down the road, but otherwise, it's just, this year it was just twenty-seven thousand plus three, three percent.
No, my goal isn't to kind of rate it out, my goal is to get that first offer, seven, about seven.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying now, yeah.
I'll do some math on this.
I love having you on the board, Bill.
Make us a better offer.
Yeah.
We'll just take the money over the years.
Remember when I spoke to him, I told you, he said he'd come in in October, maybe it's time to have him come in, but did he send you that, or did?
It was somebody that worked in his company, uh, uh, somebody that works there, Gerson, something, it's a.
And there was, was there any backup behind the number?
No, it was, it wasn't an email, it wasn't a, it wasn't a document, it was an email with a, and of course.
I'd love to know how he came up with that.
It, it, it made me laugh, because you see, you get those email offers for, you know, get fast cash now, and then they always highlight and, and make bigger the, the, the number that they want to, they want to loan you, you know? Borrow fifty-two thousand dollars, it was like, it was a regular email of our regular fund, then four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, like fifteen times bigger than that.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, all right, you're, you're putting a hard sell on me here for some reason, so, I was not open to it, I just wanted to make sure we talked.
I think, I think, I love your thinking, it, let's just do some diligence on the number.
Yeah, let's, let's run some numbers, so, and then get back to that. All right, any other new business? Other than getting Bill home to have some gluten-free cake?
I'm making a motion.
Should we sing Happy Birthday?
I'm making a motion to sing Happy Birthday.
Make a motion to adjourn.
The birthday or a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Both?
I'm in favor.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
Thank you, Virginia, for joining us, uh, I'm gonna say, did you second that? No?
I don't.
No.
Caroline did, Caroline did.
I did not.
I'm not sure if that was the second of the Happy Birthday or the adjournment.
That's why, that's why they asked to clarify.
We'll assume it was for adjournment, yes.
Thanks, H W Kim.
Before you leave, could you sign these, um, cemetery deeds and remember every.